Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the Thursday, December 12th, 2019, regular monthly meeting. I'm really excited to see all of the children. This is a real special time for us each year to have our preschoolers to come and sing. And I want to thank all the parents and the grandparents and the relatives that came out tonight to support your grandchildren and your children. And it's a great, it's gonna be a great evening. So, thank you very much for taking your time to come this evening. At this time, I would like for you to stand for a moment of silence. Amen. You may be seated. At this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Bracy to introduce the students that will be making the pledge of allegiance and also the students that will be making the statement. Dr. Bracy?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome. We're glad to have you here this evening. And Mr. Parent said we're excited when we have our students that are here before us and they're performing. Here tonight to take part in the pledge and the statement, we have multiple students. And I look forward to introducing them to you. First with the pledge of allegiance, we have twins, Matthew and Harper Baker. Their parents are attending. Mr. Baker and Ms. Baker, the mom. If you all are present, will you all please stand? The parents. And any other family members that joined, if you all are present, we would like to recognize you as well. Matthew and Harper are involved in their church, New Beginning Christian Outreach, where they love to sing. They both enjoy dressing up in capes and masks as superheroes. Their favorite food is shrimp and rice. When Matthew grows up, he wants to be a chef and Harper wants to be a doctor. For our statement, we have Antonio Jordan III and Skylar Harris. Antonio, his parents are, they're attending. Ashley Gatlin and Percy Davis, grandfather, and Satia Davis aunt. Satia Davis aunt. Now, if you all are present, will you please stand along with any other members of his family? Antonio loves dinosaurs. His favorite food is pasta. When he grows up, he wants to be a firefighter. Skylar, her parents attending. Jerry Kessler, dad. Demisha Harris, mom. Cynthia Williams, grandmother, and Roosevelt Williams, grandfather. If you all are present along with any other family members, please stand at this time and be recognized. Skylar loves to play with her Barbie camper. Her favorite food is fried chicken. You're not alone in that.
No.
When she grows up, she wants to be a doctor. And I will, before I turn it over, I would like to introduce Ms., Dr. Patricia Williams, principal, and the staff at Mount Hermon School. Will you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which a stand, one nation under God, and for liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Mr. Parent, school board chairman, Ms. Williams, vice chairwoman, school board members, Dr. Bracy, superintendent. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Antonio Jordan III. This is Skylar Harris. We are pre-K students at Mount Hermon Pre-School Centers. This has been an exciting year. At Mount Hermon, we are superheroes. Hero means here everyone respects others. The boys and girls have learned to say their ABCs and their numbers and how to speak Spanish.
We had a fall festival at school. There was a petting zoo, games, and a pumpkin patch. Tomorrow, we're gonna see a holiday play. We have several community partners that support us, including our parents. Mount Hermon is a great place to learn. Now, we will sing for you. Thank you.
You are all so smart and so important and you are the reason we all sit up at that desk there because you are important and we love you. We thank you for coming out here tonight and singing for us. We are excited. Are we excited to hear them sing? So, I'm gonna give you, thank you for coming. Thank you. Thank you. I can't wait to hear y'all sing.
Well, it's nice to know we have future doctors and we got a chef. Now, Skylar, Skylar, did you, were you the one that said you liked chicken? What part of the chicken do you like? Cause I'm a wing man. I only like the wings. So, when you eat your chicken, if you've got some wings, let me have the wings, alright? Thank y'all very much and thank you, parents and grandparents, for coming. Great job. Alright, at this time, we are going to have musical selection of the chorus.
The only reason why I liked chicken was by the time my brothers and sisters finished getting the chicken, that was all that was left of me. Can't win. I was lucky to get the wings.
Little candles burn, 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 all the light is clear. Little candles burn, 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 all the light is clear. Little candles in the room, all the light is clear. Little candles in the room, all the light is clear. Little candles in the room, all the light is clear. Little candles in the room, all the light is clear. What is here? What is here? Red, green, black, red, green, black. Black, white candles every night. Every day, we celebrate. All the things with so much light. What is here? What is here? What is here? Red, green, black, red, green, black. Black, white candles every night. Every day, we celebrate. All the things with so much light. What is here? What is here? What is here? Red, green, black, red, green, black. Black, white candles every night. Every day, we celebrate. All the things with so much light. What is here? What is here? It's here. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. There are no goodies here. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. There are no goodies here. I wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I love you all. I wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I love you all. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. There are no goodies here. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. There are no goodies here. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I love you all. I wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I love you all. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. There are no goodies here. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. Holy, holy, God. There are no goodies here. I wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I love you all. I wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I wanna wish you Merry Christmas. I love you all.
We would like to thank our co-host, Mr. Chan Smith from Olive Bridge Pre-School.
Once again. Once again, I want to thank all of you for coming out. I want to thank the parents, grandparents, guardians, and the Mount Hermon staff. I know you've been working all day and to come out, just thank you for the sacrifice and thank you for these children because it really does make our Christmas season a lot brighter. Thank y'all again for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I will ask Ms. Allen if she will read the school board mission statement.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask the board to indicate your presence by electronic vote, by voting yes. Madam Clerk?
Six members present, three members absent.
Thank you. The next item is 3.8, consideration of the agenda for December the 12th, 2019. Board members, you've had a, you've had a copy of the agenda. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Mr. Lamb, move for approval. Who seconded? Ms. Williams. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, make your preference by electronic vote, by voting yes or no. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is Ms. Essence Johnson, who will be the, our student representative this evening. We told you that you were gonna have to substitute at some point. We're so happy to have you.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here. I would like to say good, good evening, Chair Parent, Dr. Bracy, members of the school board, and all in the assembly. My name is Essence Johnson. I'm the student representative alternate and I'm standing in place of Ms. Nala, who sadly couldn't be here tonight, but she compiled a nice report for me to review with you all.
Okay.
This December representative report. The first, the first slide, as you see, is Brighton students. They are the math scholar excellent students. They have done well on their benchmarks, so they're proud of that. And they have their little certificates. In the middle, you see them playing with the Kiva plank blocks, which they are working together and practicing cooperative skills and solving, problem-solving skills, which is always awesome. The next slide is our students giving back. On the two outermost are students from IC Norcombe High School. This club is the Boys to Men and the Girls to Women's Club, sponsored by Mr. Jones. This particular club donated three boxes of non-perishable items to the Ninth Annual Oasis Ministry Food Drive, which is awesome. The middle you see are Wichita Wilson High School students, nursing students, and just students who wanted to give blood and give back to their community. The next slide is the faculty and staff at IC Norcombe High School. They just wanted to show appreciation to the staff by giving a hot chocolate bar so everyone got to make their own hearts, hot chocolate and just enjoy one another. And our next slide are upcoming events, which are progress reports and our winter break, which no school, so yay. But this concludes my presentation. Thank you all for that.
Thank you. Alright, the next item on the agenda is Understood Discipline, 5.1. Consideration of an Expulsion, Discipline Case Number 2019-20/03. The recommendation is expulsion. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Williams made the motion. Ms. Allen seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, make your request by voting electronically. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is always, we love because it's instruction, and that is Dr. Anita Wynn.
Good evening, Chairman Parent and members of the board and Dr. Bracy. It is December. Winter break is almost here and we are so excited about that, but we are also excited about many of the things that are happening. If you haven't had a chance to meet her already, I would like to introduce to you and welcome Ms. Khadijah Alexander. She is our new coordinator of reading and English. She brings a whole bunch of information, knowledge, and understanding about elementary education and reading and English and school leadership. So, we're really excited to have her join our PPS family. Tonight, in addition to our board report, we want to highlight our Argonauts. And so, we have with us Argonauts DeVice Branch, who is a teacher, and Gabrielle Smalls, and these, who is a student. They traveled to San Francisco Bay area during the week of November 15th through the 20th of this year. And they participated in design thinking, innovation, and entrepreneurship. Among the many locations they visited were the Labs of IDEO, where they learned firsthand about the design process by designing a game for future space travelers. They are both here tonight to talk to us and I want to first introduce Ms. Branch, who is an eighth grade physical science teacher at Churchill Middle School. And she and her husband Jonathan Branch are proud 1990 graduates of IC Norcombe High School. She has three amazing sons, Christian and Nigel, both graduates of Churchill High School in 2017, 2018, and Evan, who is a freshman at Churchill High School. At Churchill Middle School, she serves as a Science Department Chair and Representative for the Students, Superintendent's Advisory Group, and she has recently begun a book club at Churchill Middle to fulfill the students' desires to explore and discuss diverse genres while sharpening their reading skills. She really likes Jason Learning and uses it in her classroom, so she was thrilled to be chosen as a Jason Teacher Argonaut for the 2019 Design Thinking Expedition in San Francisco. Francisco. In addition to that, we have Ms. Gabrielle Smalls, and she is the daughter of Anton and Hanaka Smalls, and her parent, her mother's here with her little sister Kia. And Gabrielle is a rising senior at Churchill High School. She is taking part in extracurriculars offered at the school, including the recycling club, the environmental club, the Blue Crab Bowl Team, I don't know what that is, junior marshals, and the golf team. In her free time, she likes to play golf, read, and spend time with her family. Upon graduating in June of next year, she plans to attend college to obtain a degree in food science. Come on up.
Good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
We're certainly just happy to be here tonight to share with the Chair, our superintendent, and the rest of the board members, so we do thank you for hearing us. We do recognize that we have about three minutes, so we're going to try to make sure we adhere to that. But we came up with this presentation to kind of show you all what we did while we were in California. It was an amazing experience, something that neither of us, I can think we can say we'll never forget. Okay, really quickly, Dr. Ballard is the person who created Jason Learning, and he's the person who is recognized for finding the Titanic. So he began this and started with students who wanted to see what he did, and it kind of evolved into what we know it to be today. We reach, and I say we, I like to include myself in the Jason family. Gabrielle and I are part of an alumni group that Jason recognizes, and over the course of one school year, we see about 3 million teachers and students. Ms. Jude, you can go ahead and talk about her.
Could you talk in the mic? Yeah, thank you.
She was a teacher Argonaut at first, and then she became one of the Argonaut coordinators. This is our design thinking team. It was a great body of women, which actually led us to name it Women of Design Thinking. That's what we named it. That's us on the plane, and that's the team, and those are the girls.
So Higher Club was one of the places that we went. One of the things I think that we all agreed on was these were big companies doing big things, but it was just amazing to see how every CEO, founder, person of the group, had a heart for people and had a heart to share, and that's what really made the difference. For me, anybody can make money, anybody can be successful, but to me, it really makes a difference with how they connect with the surrounding communities and help other people to come up to where they are. Keaton is the person, and Lisa is who did that. And I'll share this with anybody that wants to see, because we have notes at the bottom where you can actually get to know a little bit more about what we did, but you can go ahead to the next one.
We also went to IDEO, a company whose goal is to innovate and kind of represents design thinking as a whole. So that was a really cool company. They have, oh, sorry. The Community Submersibles Project was done by somebody named Shanee. She purchased a submersible, and she kind of refurbished it, and then she made it the Community Submersible Project. And also, they allow people in the community to ride in the submersibles for free or to get in the submersibles.
All Power Labs.
All Power Labs was also a company that is striving for ways to create new renewable energy sources, and that's gasified, charcoal, I don't know, something with gasification, but yep, it's a renewable.
And they do, they're looking to, they only cost about, and I say only, but it only costs about $35,000, and they're looking to find donors to create those, to share with different villages in Africa so that they can have electricity. Next. This was really amazing. Okay, so I'm a fan of anything sports, so of course I thought about it before, Stanford, from a sports perspective, but to see the design school is absolutely amazing. They have a waitlist of thousands of people that want to get in, and only about 12 are chosen in the actual design school, but they do have different classes that they allow people to come to. And here is pretty much the foundation of where they allow people in the surrounding areas to come to just create, to think that you would have a class, that there really are no grades. It's more so what you've created and how the people around you can benefit from it is how you are judged. And it was an amazing thing. We had an activity, her name was Melissa, she's written books, and she shared so many different things with us to bring back to our community. Next. You guys, Google Headquarters. We were just off floor to see the car that does all the street views and all those kinds of things. It was so amazing. And, oh my gosh, Dan was the one who, if you can see right in the middle there, he's doing and showing us algorithms and how they code, and he was actually over the hotel division at one time, but now he's over everything that we see and all those ads on the side that come up, and we wonder how did Google know that we searched that last week and it came up? Well, he's the person who does that. So it was, I mean, really, it was mind-blowing. If you could see, we kind of had fun too. There's a data, so they have a whole campus, and it's just all the different divisions. They actually have it to where they keep their people on the campus every day. They have food for them, and it's just amazing to think that this company has evolved to such a great thing that, you know, 20 years ago was just kind of starting, so. We're almost done, it's only three more.
That's okay, you just take your time. We're enjoying this. Don't worry about it, just take your time.
Kindred Robotics was a company dedicated to creating a robotic arm to make the workplace more efficient for those in shipping and packaging. They've worked with companies like Gap, Carter's, and American Eagle, and what the arm does is it reaches and sorts the items for them, so the human labor isn't as bad.
Okay, next. All right, 360 Labs, you may look at that and think it's a science initiative, but it actually is a lab of life. This was one of the, the last day, I guess, just kind of touched me more than any other day. If you can see, right there in the middle, he has like a little ponytail. He was so awesome. He was the CEO, and also Heather down there at the bottom where Gabrielle is, with Tara, another one of our teammates. So they're doing amazing things right now. Basically, they have bought a space for different companies to come in and have a place where they can collaborate with other companies. But the great part about this is, why is it a lab of life? They do everything. Inside this place is all kinds of startups in the Bay Area. The gentleman that you see there, I tried to find another picture, that he wasn't covering his face, but his name is Mr. Martinez. He actually is the person who runs a whole division of the Department of Defense. So here we are, you know, three feet away from this gentleman who created, you see Gabrielle has on those glasses, they are glasses that like you see in movies that you think is fake, well, those are real, and they actually tell like all kinds of things. So he told some things he couldn't even tell us about what was really happening, but they go like seven, you know, seven floors underground, they can have no kind of communication. He creates those things, and he did this birth out of a fact that he loved computers when they first came out, there was no one to really help him. He created this, and now here we are, listening to all the great things he had to say and what we can do to impact our community. So that was awesome. And this is just one of the places that rents out the space in the place that Heather and him have. The other, where you see me, I think it's the third one across the top, Dominic is his cousin, and what he shared, we'll share with you really quickly, the two initiatives that we would love to bring back to PPS, and maybe some of you all can help us to get those things off the ground. We'll tell you about that in a second, but that's what happened there at 360 Labs. If you see in the middle, it says it is what it is, but it will become what you make it. And that's what we believe that we can do. Gabrielle is going to be going off to college, but I think we're going to stay in contact and try to make some things happen for our district. All right, so last one.
The last one was probably the most inspiring for me. The owner, Mr. Kevin, he's at the bottom, but him and his wife created, originally, they started out working, creating, the wife is a chef, and so she would cook for friends and family and stuff like that, and then she was diagnosed with cancer, and she devoted her life to a plant-based lifestyle, and this is where Nibble started. So they made a startup, and they even feed our major sports teams, like the Golden State Warriors, I think the Giants, the baseball team, and yep, we got to visit their company.
And one thing I'll say about Kevin, he extended his information to us, you know, I've reached out to him, and they're looking to help us bring his company, Nibble, to the East Coast, and I would love to, again, have some of you all help. You know, I've contacted him directly, and we can get some companies that will come and be a part of what he has going on. We can definitely make it happen here in Hampton Roads. I think the last one is next. Right, so you see some funny ones that we did. We laughed a lot, we had a good time, and it was something that really changed my life. And hopefully, we can really sincerely, design thinking, you kind of, I don't know, I don't know if you think it speaks for itself, but it's so much more to say about what design thinking actually is. And my initiative is say and see what can I be. When I saw the little preschoolers up here, they gave me some great ideas of how to get that started. We want to connect people, not just famous, but famous and not so famous, but that you can share your life. And then if they go in and say, hey, I used to have ADHD, or, you know, I was in a single-family home, you can connect and see that you can be what you're saying that you believe. Hey, really quickly, what's yours?
My initiative was Cost for Cow, and it was supposed to be a way that you could get healthier food options at like a lower price. So it would like map out, it's supposed to be an app, so the app would take you and you would go in and put in a fast food-like order, but it would swap to a healthier food option.
Thank you all very much.
So if I put in chocolate, it would substitute something else, right?
Yes.
Options, options.
Options, options. Thank you all both, that was great. In fact, today I tried my first plant-based burger. And if you haven't had it, called Impossible at Burger King, and I really liked it. I didn't, I didn't see a taste in the meat plus the plant-based, I mean, it actually was good, so.
Yeah, I've had one too.
It's good. Thank you all very much. We really appreciate your hard work, and good luck in college. I know you're going to be great. All right, the next item on the agenda is presentation, and that's Resilient Youth Southampton Roads, Ms. Robin Dunbar and Ms. Sarah McBride from the Elizabeth River Project.
Good evening, how are you?
Great.
Thank you so much for allowing me to share what we do at the Elizabeth River Project right down the street. Again, my name is Robin Dunbar. I'm the Deputy Director of Education for the Elizabeth River Project. Some of you might know me also as Princess Elizabeth, who I represent the namesake for our home river, the Elizabeth. I've worked there now for 20 years, and I'm proud to say that all of Portsmouth schools are River Star schools doing right by the river, and I'm here to ask you tonight to endorse something that the students have worked with me on, which is a youth resilience strategy. But if you aren't familiar with the Elizabeth River Project, we are a nonprofit working to restore our home river. Our education platforms include our floating classroom, the learning barge, America's greenest vessel. We also have Paradise Creek Nature Park, River Star Schools program, and Wetlands in the Classroom. Again, all Portsmouth schools are considered River Star schools for implementing environmental projects back at school, and annually, all the preschoolers, I was so happy to see them here tonight, they participate in our park programs. They have traditionally grown trees and nurtured them back at school, and then they come to Paradise Creek Nature Park and plant them. They're just adorable. And about 1,000 this year of K through 12 students will also attend our park field trips called the Resilient River Otter. And we're also working with Victory Elementary, the entire school, 600 students this year are greening their schoolyard, and we're planting over 600 native trees and wild flowers, and they will become one of the first of Portsmouth's resilient STEM schools. So we're very excited about that, and it's just been a wonderful program. So in addition, over the last three years, the Elizabeth River Project was awarded a national grant with NOAA, and with that, we worked with Portsmouth schools to address flooding and sea level rise. So they have implemented, meaning the students along with us, a lot of projects, and they were recognized as youth resilient leaders. We had about 36 Portsmouth students, elementary, middle, and high school that were these youth resilient leaders last year and over, actually, the last three years. Along with that, we recognized a new category in our River Star Schools as resilient River Star Schools, and the Portsmouth schools like IC Norcombe and Waters Middle, Woodrow Wilson, they're all now part of that wonderful recognition. So with that, these youth resilient leaders helped us pioneer the first resilient youth Southampton Roads strategy. It is a strategy of hope and action to prepare those who will inherit the rising seas. We believe this might be one of the first in the nation. We have all sorts of people looking at us right now, seeing what the students helped us do, their voices in here of what they consider to be resilient. And the vision of this strategy is to help our children become hopeful, resilient leaders who will innovate and persevere to safeguard our community as our lives change with a changing environment. So tonight, I am here to ask you if you would endorse this strategy that your students helped create. We want them to help to continue to develop and support their efforts as resilient youth leaders. And just to tell you the three goals of this strategy that their voice was very prevalent in, goal one was to create a powerful collaboration of school systems and community partners. Goal two was to transform teachers and students into environmentally literate citizens regarding resilient issues. And goal three was to discover hope by making a difference. So I have brought with me copies, if you're interested.
I was going to ask you, do we have copies, so that we can study it, so that we can further discuss it?
Absolutely. So I brought those, and then also, you can go online, anybody in the audience can also go online under elizabethriverprojects.org, look up the strategic plan, and I just want to thank you for continuing supporting the students participating in Elizabeth River Restoration, and together, we're making her restoration a reality. So thank you so much, and you should be very proud of your students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution, a consideration of a resolution recognizing Virginia Principals Appreciation Week, January the 19th through the 25th, and that would be Dr. Cromarty, Chief of Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Bracy. Bring forth for your consideration a certificate of recognition. By virtue of the authority vested by the Constitution of Virginia and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized 2020 Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week. Whereas school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school staff and student body, and to communicate effectively with parents, to engage them in the learning process, and whereas principals serve as the educational leaders responsible for managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure safe and effective learning environments for all students in Virginia's public and private schools, and whereas principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they're at school, and whereas principals must work collaboratively with teachers, staff, students, parents, and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens, and whereas Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and to recognize the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. Now therefore, I, Ralph Northam, do hereby recognize January 19th through 25th, 2020, as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call observance to the attention of all our citizens.
Thank you. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Ms. Williams made the motion, and Ms. Ackerson seconded the motion. What's, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Please make your voice, vote, electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Is unanimous.
You know, being a former elementary principal and a former assistant principal in middle school, I don't think we realize sometimes how much work our principals do. They're on the battle line every day, and they've got to cover a lot of different areas. So I, as a board member, and I'm sure the rest of the board, feel very humbled to have these, these public servants to work for us. So I think this resolution is very, very appropriate. Thank you very much, and to our government. The next item on the agenda is amendments, consideration of the minutes of November the 7th, 2019. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Ms. Lamb made the motion, Ms. Williams seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Is unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is public comment, public comment on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we do. Mr. Barry Randall.
And would you read the?
Yes. The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chair after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only.
Good evening, Chair Parent, Board Members at Large, Dr. Bracy. I'm here tonight to address your last board meeting on last week. I'm kind of disappointed that I just couldn't come tonight and enjoy my grandson singing tonight, that I have to also speak. I'm aware of there is a need to advocate for those that have been wronged. I always feel the need to speak up. I spent a great deal of this afternoon talking to individuals in reference to me having to come here tonight, because I made a deal the earlier part of this year, a few of you guys are familiar with it, most of the public isn't, but I had made a deal not to speak publicly at the school board meeting or the city council meeting for the duration of 2019. And hundreds benefited from that deal. But unfortunately, after giving them the assurance that tonight I will not be speaking of no one on city council or the city manager, they was okay. I'm here because, Chair Parent, I believe you spoke on behalf of the board, I'm not sure, but hopefully, after we have a little dialogue tonight, that you will be comfortable enough to apologize to the attendance liaisons from last week, because as long as I've been in politics, I've never known for an open body to speak of employees in an open session. I don't know if you forgot that you all were in open session, or that the cameras was rolling, or I don't know if something was heated in closed session. But when you look at the attendance liaison positions, you only have six of them. So it don't take a rocket scientist to know who you all were talking about. So you know, when I was at work this week, some asked, are you here all day? Because your job is on the line. And I said, no, my job isn't on the line, because before I went out for surgery, my three schools, Crowe, Churchley Academy, and Brighton, did not have one student that was in non-compliance. Of course, when I came back, all that was changed, because our assignments changed. That's neither here nor there. My issue is, I think you guys are speaking on something that you don't have a clue about. I heard you also mentioned, sir, that, you know, you guys fought for that position. First of all, you only fought for probably two additional, because you had attendance officers working attendance since Jesus walked earth for Portsmouth Public School. So when you say, if they're not doing what they're supposed to do, then Dr. Bracy, you need to write them out of the budget. It's easier for us to vote some of you all out of office than it is for you guys to just say, write someone out of the budget, in reference to the point that if you don't know what's going on. First of all, we're not truancy officer, and you all didn't know that. You thought you did, but that goes beyond, because, and I'm not directing this directly to you, Mr. Parent, I'm directing this to all of you all. I guess if you think, because you go into these schools and you take pictures with these principals and put them on social media to, you know, come across like you're really doing a work, when you ain't doing nothing, then you would have known what it is that we actually do. We work chronic accentionism. That's all we do. We do not work truancy. We cannot make parents come in and bring a note, that is, this division. Maybe if you all go over to our neighboring cities in Chesapeake and Norfolk and see how they do attendance, then you would understand that, hey, maybe we need to change up some things. Because we have parents that live in Chesapeake, live in other cities, and their children go to our school. And they go to our school because Chesapeake won't take them in, because they won't provide proper documentation. And then because we're unlearned, we like to say, oh, the McKinney-Vito law, and the McKinney-Vito Act says this. No, the McKinney-Vito Act states that if you are a child without a parent or guardian, and if you are homeless, you can still go to a particular school. The McKinney-Vito Act does not protect a child who or parent that is living with a friend, and they still want to go to a particular said school. We have students that live all the way in Great Bridge, and they come to school every day at 9:30, 9:45, and the school opened up at 8:30 in the morning. We have students that do not come to school for seven and eight and nine days in a row. And what can we do? Well, you have parents that are, you know, at the house, don't come to my house anymore. Don't do this, don't do that. So I just think that it was a little bit, you know, dis, you know, generous for you guys to just speak on something that you don't know, and to assume that someone is not going to the house, that someone is not going out, and someone is not doing what they're supposed to do, because we're doing what we're supposed to do. But our hands are tied. When I have a student that hasn't been to school for 15, 16, and 17 days, and I'm like, can I take the parent to court? Can I take the parent to court? No, don't take them to court. What you want me to do? Keep trying. Try what? Keep doing what?
Mr. Randall, your time, your five minutes is up. Board members, would you like to extend? All right, you can continue.
Thank you. What, what, what would you all have us to do when the parent pulls out the phone with Officer Jackson, the resource officer, that are there? Some of our schools don't even have resource officers, and they're right there, and they say, don't come to my house anymore. So at the end of the day, I think it would be better if you talk to some of these veteran attendance liaisons that's been doing it before us, brilliant people, think we know what we're doing, and have a conversation with them to find out what's going on. Because when we're in the office, and we have students coming in there, and right in front of my face, right in front of the principal's face, you have students saying, our parents telling the student, oh, they got to take in over here, just tell them you're homeless. So we taking students that don't even supposed to go there. And I know some of you are gonna say, oh, Barry, you overstepping your boundaries. I had a meeting this week with PRHA. They say as a courtesy, they will send out a memo to all residents in their properties, letting them know if Portsmouth Public Schools contact us and tell us that you have someone using your address for a child to go to school, you are in violation of your lease. Because that's what we run into when we go knock on doors. They don't live here, but that's their address. Well, they don't live here, but that's their address. But again, you all have to make these meetings, go talk, because it's things that can be done. They don't have these issues in other districts to this degree, because they make you do everything to the letter. We're the ones allowing, we're advocating for the parent, I mean, for the parents, for the students, for the students, for the parents, for the students, for the parents, but no one is advocating for these teachers. Parents coming into schools, cussing the teachers out, cussing us out, all because we're calling for a note. I'm not, I'm not concerned, you don't need a doctor's note, just give me a handwritten note. Let me know what's going on, why your child is at home. This is what we do. You don't pay me to work past 3 o'clock, but we out there working. Pitbulls charging us, and what have you. It's 5:30 in the evening, because you know what we are? We are telemarketers, sir, because all of our schools are not universal. Everybody's doing what they want to do. Over here, the reality is, they're not being honest with you all. You don't have attendance clerk. You have people that were hired to do this job, and then someone told them, oh, you're the attendance clerk. So then when I come in there, well, I don't know how to do that. Well, they told me to do that. Well, we don't do that. Well, the guidance counselor do that. So then the guidance counselor, I handle attendance, don't talk to them. Then you can't even speak to a principal who's two feet away from you without talking to the office manager to ask, can you ask the principal a question? This is what we go through. So before you guys sit back and say, oh, well, if they're not doing their job, Dr. Bracy, write them out of the budget, that's, that's, that's disheartening. You have people out here doing, working their fingers off, doing what they're supposed to do. We're knocking that door. We're getting these numbers down, and we're trying to make sure that we are in compliance. And the only thing I'm saying is, before you guys get heated, I'm not here speaking up for me, because at this point, I already know what I need to do anyway. Because the reality is, I, I'm, I don't want to put the attention on me, but I believe in my heart, I have a sneaky suspicion, that the attendance piece is more highlighted, because Barry Randall over there. But the reality is, you can ask Mr. Barnes this, you can ask Sarah Duncan Heinz, because Sarah joked and said, as a bus driver, you make more than me, and I'm a school teacher, because I took a $12,000 to $15,000 pay cut to work over in attendance. And if you all don't believe, ask someone to my right. Some of y'all called him anyway, and don't think I know that you called him about me. But Mr. Meekins need to give some of you all a little homework, to let you know that's against the law, because there's only one person here that you should be talking to about any employee.
Your extension of two minutes is now up.
Thank you, sir.
And if this time, hold up, Ms. Akerson.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I guess, Barry, thanks so much for always passionately speaking. Just, just to be honest, I was one of the ones that agreed with Chairman Parent regarding, you know, if the attendance clerk's liaisons are not doing their jobs, then, you know, we need to either replace them or, you know, write them out the budget. Not saying it in that type of context, but we, like you said, we don't know what's going on. And in your defense, I'm gonna follow up with Dr. Bracy, because I want to know where the directive came that said that you can't send out the court, or send these parents to court. So I definitely, you know, want to get some follow-up on that. But I think we did at the last meeting, that question was answered. But I think we were, it was a heated meeting, it was an emotional meeting, and, and a lot came from that regarding some hearings, and there was some absenteeism with the students. But like I said, I'm definitely gonna follow up, because we did discuss that surrounding the court situation. So, thank you so much.
May I respond to her?
Okay.
So, and I'm glad you was on enough to say that.
As long as it's not.
No, I got you, I got you.
I was gonna say, don't.
No, because a lot of people won't speak publicly, and I appreciate that. But what I'm saying is, is a real easy job, doesn't take a scientist. If you look at someone in the school, and there's 16 kids living under one roof, we know someone telling the story, when there's a two-bedroom house. So what I'm saying is, is an easy fix. But the problem is, of, of course, I don't want to look like the bad person, but we have a job to do. And if the division doesn't want to take a stand, just say, we don't want to take a stand, we don't want to look like we're hurting people, just say that, we can deal with that. But don't say we're not doing what we're supposed to do, when we're telling you all it's 16 kids living under one roof. When we're telling you all that there's a child coming from Great Bridge, when we're in meetings and they're telling us, oh, well, we have to come all the way from Great Bridge, because I don't want him standing over there, I want him standing with me.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Thank you very much, appreciate you coming. Dr. Bracy?
We do, we will have a presentation to the board at the regular meeting in January, as you all asked for last week.
Correct.
Yeah, so we will, we will be going into further detail about the description of the position.
Not for me, Mr. Parent, but no apologies to the other liaisons?
No. I, I just want to say this, as the, as the former director of Student Services, the attendance officers came under my supervision. I do understand exactly their jobs, and I do appreciate what they do. But I think you're taking something that was said out of context without knowing the whole discussion, and I think it would have made more sense. But I do appreciate very much, this board appreciates what the attendance officers do, and, and if I need to apologize to them, I have no problems doing that. But we're going to get a, a presentation, because there are, we are held accountable, as you well know, under the standards of quality. Attendance is one of the areas where we have to, we have to improve, or we are not, our schools are not accredited. So thank you for your comments, they're well taken, and we will address that, okay? Thank you. Madam Clerk, do, do we have any more speakers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ray Carver.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Randall, Mr. Lamb, were you speaking to?
Well, no, I was not speaking directly to Mr. Randall, but I did want to address that I do believe that Mr. Randall has brought up several things that, and I think, not to put any words in anyone's mouth, but just off of summarizing what I'm hearing. Now, I do think that, that it sounds like there may very well be issues of procedure or policy that's not being followed across the board in the same manner, in the same way. So I think some valid points was brought up that definitely needs to be looked at along with what the board has already asked for as well. So that's all I wanted to say, and thank you, Mr. Randall.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Carver?
Before you speak, I just want to clarify, I, I see that you're speaking IC Norcom Girls' Basketball Program. When you're speaking, be very careful about not using any students' names or any personnel names. You may speak concerning that subject in a general fashion, okay?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Well, first of all, good evening, Chairman Parent.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Bracy and the school members. My name is Ray Carver. I'm a basketball parent for IC Norcom High School. I have been a parent for three or four years, going on four years now. I come to, I come concerning, and I want to speak concerning about the abrupt and untimely firing of, of the basketballs, the, the Washington Girls Basketball Team coach, and the way it was handled. First of all, I'd like to say, the way the principal handled the situation was totally unnecessary and unprofessional. We had, I had a meeting with the principal at one, and when addressed it, when, when I addressed him about this situation, and how he addressed the team about the situation, he, this was what he done. He, he addressed the team after they fired the coach. So he, he made the girls feel very, he made the, I'm sorry, he made the girls feel very much like it was their fault. The principal told them that the program, the principal told them to get with the program, or they can go to. He caused a lot of emotional distress.
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
I was getting ready to say, you're.
This is a personnel matter that really, the, the professional
Right.
has a right to, to be heard in a, in the proper form for that.
Right, exactly. I was getting ready, thank you. Basically, you are, you're making comments about the principal and the principal's action, and you're more than less criticizing, so you have to be very careful, because this is a personnel issue, and that will be dealt with by, by the superintendent.
Okay, well, let me just say that the way that the situation was handled was, was horrible.
Okay.
Our girls worked all, all summer with their coach. And my, my, my girls that, that played for them have actually been working for over four years with this coach. And they fired him three days before the first regular season game, which was untimely. And, and it caused a lot of turmoil with the team and coaches and, and, and the kids. And it was just a horrible situation, the way they handled it. And I would, I would like to take up for the coach, because he's a great coach. He's been there for, I don't know how many years, but he's always there for the girls, in the gym 24/7. And unlike other schools around this, and that surround area, he actually trains and builds the girls up to be great players. He doesn't go recruit other girls from other teams in, in the area. And he's a great coach, he's a great man to these girls, and these girls looked up to him. And when they fired him, they was, they were crying, and, and they didn't even want to play in the next game, you know? It was just, it was just horrible. And I would just like to say that I think he should, he should get a, a fair chance to finish out the season, as well as the girls, because they worked hard with him all, all summer long, just to have their coach fired three days before the regular season game.
I tell you, I, let's. I tell you, I, let's put it this way, I, I appreciate your comments, uh, before the board, and, and we will take this, the superintendent, uh, will take all of this information under advisement, and we appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers? Okay, thank you. The next item is public comments on board agenda items. Do we have any speakers? No speakers. The next item is the human resources report. Ms. Russell, there we go.
Chairman Parent, school board members, and Dr. Bracy, good evening.
Good evening.
The human resources transaction report was placed in board docs for your review. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, I ask for your approval to, of the report as presented in your package.
Board members, do I have an approval? Ms. Williams? And second, by Ms. Atkinson, any discussion concerning the transaction report? Hearing none, board members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk, the results?
Um, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, and welcome aboard. The next item, we move to budget and planning, uh, consideration of the financial budget report for October 2019. What is the board's pleasure? Ms. Williams made a motion, and it was second by Ms. Atkinson. You've had a copy of the financial reports, and, Mr. Falk, you can go ahead and come to this podium. I don't see any questions. Your reports are very thorough, and, um, right now, uh, having no discussion, board members, we can make our preference for the report by electronic vote. The next item is consideration of the financial budget report for November 2019. Ms. Williams made the motion. May I second? Ms. Atkinson, second. The motion, do we have any discussion concerning the report? Hearing none, madam, board, board members, yes?
She didn't complete the vote, she didn't certify the vote of our last.
Oh, I thought she did. Oh, you didn't? I'm sorry.
It's unanimous.
I thought you, I'm sorry, I thought you said it was. All right. Now, we have a motion, we're ready for discussion. Hearing no discussion, board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Now, Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. All right. It's 8:18, and that's good evening. Dr. Bracy, it is your time.
Okay, well, by 8:20, I'm going to have.
I'm not, I'm not putting any pressure on you.
Oh, don't worry about it. All right, well, good evening again to, um, board members. I tell you, it's, it's hard to believe that we've come to our last meeting in 2019, but I'm excited to share that we've ended the calendar year on a high note. As you may have seen last week, Portsmouth Public Schools is one of 250 school divisions across both the United States and Canada to be named the college board's 10th annual AP district honor roll. Yet, I mean, that deserves a round of applause. The honor recognizes school divisions that have increased access to advanced placement or AP coursework while maintaining or increasing percentage of students earning scores three or higher on AP exams. And when these students score at least a three or higher on these end-of-year exams, they can earn college credit that will be used, that can be used and transferred as courses in four, uh, four-year colleges or universities. Like I say, kudos to our curriculum and instruction team and our school councils for helping us earn this great honor. Also, this month, it was announced that we not only have one, but two Langley Teacher Mini-Grant Award winners in our school division. Churchland Middle's Judith Clayton and Churchland High School's Jamie Casumano, I, I hope I'm getting that right, anyway, Jamie from Churchland High. She, they, they earned $500 from Langley Federal Credit Union for their commitment to education and the youth of Hampton Roads. So, I want to say congratulations to them. I also would be remiss if I did not point out that we're eagerly awaiting the results of our annual Bakers Best Competition that took place tonight over at Wilson High School. The competition is fierce every year, but it, it probably got a little easier this year because we were not participating in it.
I smelled, I smelled the.
Yeah, in addition to some of the great treats, it's, that, you know, it supports our school foundation, so that's the, the big piece behind it. And we're u, that's used for scholarships and grants for our students and teachers. And of course, I don't have to say, it's already been noted, we have our winter break coming up next week. Looking around the room and hearing from our wonderful student performers tonight, I would think it'd be difficult not for anyone to be in holiday spirit. However, I do not want to, I do want to wish all of our students and families and staff and members of the community a wonderful holiday season and a happy new year. We're doing great work in this school division, and I know we'll pick that right back up when we get back in 2020, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. The next, the next item is board members' comments. Do we have any board members that would like to make any comments? Ms. Schumate, and, yes, Ms. Schumate?
I'm going to make this really, really quick, but.
That's okay.
Yeah, because it's 8:21. Um, but I just want to say to the citizens of Portsmouth, I really do appreciate being able to serve. It's been a year for me, and I appreciate you guys, um, believing in me as well as my platform, and I will continue to serve you guys as well as I possibly can, and help out with the teachers as well as our students and any part of administration. So, I just want to say, happy holidays. Thank you so much for everything that you guys do, and I look forward to continuing to serve.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Atkinson?
I just want to say, happy holidays to everyone, um, and thank you, Attorney Meekins, for always bringing us these great peanuts. And I think this is from you, Dr. Bracy, the other one, correct?
You, you're correct, I was going to say that.
He was getting ready to say.
You know, you, y'all both compete every year, but we appreciate it. So, um, thank you, and, uh, like I said, happy holidays to our staff, thank you for all you do. Portsmouth Public Schools overall is selling forward, and I'm proud to be a board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, somebody hit the wrong button, Ms. Heinz is not here, so it's Mr. Barnes. Okay, Mr. Barnes?
First, I want to apologize for being late, I was at a school-related event.
Well, that's good.
But, um, I, I, like, um, um, Ms. Schumate, I do want to thank the, um, public for allowing me the opportunity to serve. This has, uh, been a, a great year for me, um, actually being able to, being a kid, growing up out there at home and be, having this opportunity to be on the school board. Growing up, where I come from, I really never thought that this was my opportunity. But now, people seeing me on this school board gives a lot of kids hope and a lot of, um, life, and it makes them want to believe that they can do this as well. So, I just want to say I appreciate you guys on the school board as well, even though we've had some trying times this year. Um, I know sometimes, um, I can be a handful, just like any other, any one of you, but, you know, I really appreciate you guys for giving me the, this opportunity to fuss with you sometimes, have political arguments and all those type of things. Just, just so you know, none of this is personal with me.
No.
I, I always feel like that I'm trying to do what's best for the community, so we don't always have to agree on things, but I just want you to know that it's not personal, um, for me at all. Only thing that's personal for me is making the best opportunity for these children. And, uh, again, I thank you, I thank the citizens, I thank the staff, we have a, a great staff, you guys do such a great job. Um, I had a chance to visit so many schools and go to so many events this year, I'm just, I'm just in awe and thankful for the opportunity. And before I go, I want to shout out Lakeview, they had a dance competition the other day. Um, Ms. Schumate was there as well, um, the, it was the kids, the teachers, and the, um, parents. Me personally, I think the kids won every round, but, um, the teachers won a couple too. But, again, thank you guys for the opportunity, and thank you for allowing me to see so much in my life. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to, uh, point out that at the VSBA conference, Portsmouth Public Schools' board members were 100% in attendance. We got one more year to do that, guys, and it, then we're going to apply for being a board of distinction, so thank you. And I would be remiss if I did not say, uh, to Mr. Meekins, I understand that tonight is your last night, and we have really appreciated your advice. I go back to, way back, Ms. Williams, and I especially go back to 2010, when we got, it, well, let's put it this way, that's when we first met you, under, uh, different circumstances. But I want to say to you, as the board chair, and I'm sure the other members, thank you for your dedicated service, uh, to us and your legal advice. You have been a, a joy to work with, and anytime that we have had any kind of legal, um, advice, you've always been there, and you've always helped us. So, enjoy your so-called retirement, uh, and we wish you well, and Godspeed. Thank you. Ms.?
You never give a lawyer a chance to talk, Mr. Chairman. It's been, believe me, I've told everybody I've ever met, they have no idea what a great job this board does in this city. You, they, you just are the most unappreciated group that there is. And, uh, I, I just joy so much watching these children come forward and knowing that you've done this for them.
Right.
You will never have a better reward, and I have enjoyed every minute of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I did not realize that tonight was the last night.
Yes.
I'm, I'm still thinking that Mr. Meekins would be with us January, that's why I was saying, "Mr. Meekins, can't you check on that?" Remember? And he did, looked at me kind of strange, like, "Check on that and report back," because I guess, uh, really didn't want to see you go. As, as, uh, Mr. Parent had said, we've had a long journey together, and I trust you with my life. And I remember when, uh, Dr. Stuckwich was superintendent, and he called us when we were subpoenaed, and he said, "I checked with some attorneys, and I wanted you all to have the best attorney in the region or the state." And they recommended Sam Meekins. And so, when Mr. Meekins was able to stay on with us under contract and whatever, it was, it was a relief for many of us with what the things we had gone through. So, I wish you well, and we're going to miss you. Can we call you sometime still?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, well, well, the best to you, and, and you certainly have done a wonderful job, and, and it is very good to have confidence in your legal counsel.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
All right, the last item on the agenda is adjournment, and I will say Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night.
Before we leave, can I thank, we need to thank, uh, Mount Hermon.
Mount Hermon.
Yeah, they gave us all these, uh.
Russell Stover, hello.
Yeah, very nice.